Thank you very much for joining us. Colombian Editorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Evergreen School Board position from District One, I believe. I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor. And I believe you met the board members. Just so you know, reporter Katie Gillespie is sitting in.
Hi, Katie.
She won't be asking questions here, but might want to speak with you later.
Okay.
And so you know, we are videotaping this. We will post it unedited on our website for the benefit of our readers. And as I mentioned, there's a third candidate, Dennis Jepson, who indicated he would be here, so hopefully he can join us. But in the meantime, we'll move forward.
Sure.
And we'll start with introductions. Just take one to two minutes to introduce yourselves, give us a little bit of background, explain why you arrived.
Okay.
And we'll start at the center.
Okay. So I'm Megan Miles, and I'm a teacher out in the Hawkinson School District. And I believe in public education. I believe in investing in our students. And I believe that there needs to be more voices advocating for our students. I have been our local education association co-president for the last four or five years. I have, I'm a music teacher out there, so I put on a lot of community events for our school. And being out in Hawkinson, we have quite a few community members that come to our concerts because that's what there is to do out there. I have formed a school leadership team, giving our students opportunities to have a voice in our school. They put together a recycling program out in Hawkinson, which is fantastic. They have organized assemblies and different things for their own schools. So it's a new thing that we started, but it's neat seeing that students can have a voice in their, in their schools. I also put together our school's multicultural events for the last three years. So I've been having a lot of fun putting together community events and, and reaching out to people in that way. I guess that's a little bit about what I do and about who I am. I'm also my niece's soccer coach, so I have a full plate, but I'm hoping to be a voice for our kids in the Evergreen School District.
Great, thank you. Julie?
My name is Julie Boca Negra. I'm currently serving as the school director for the Position One. I was appointed in 2012. I was elected in 2013. I'm currently serving on our school foundation board as the liaison for our school board. I got my start working with boards in the early 2000s. I was on the Evergreen Little League Board for many years. I was a youth coach, parent volunteer, and then I was on the board of directors for about six years when I was the president of Little League, Little League for two years. And if you ever want to know what true volunteerism like, be the president of the Little League. That'll awaken anybody up. I work for Columbia Credit Union. I'm a branch manager. I have the luxury of working and living in the community that I'm at. I work in Orchard, which is in the area that I live in, and luckily it's in our district too, so I kind of have a pulse of the heartbeat of our community. Through that, I've been on business organizations. I was affiliated with the Battleground Chamber of Commerce for 10 years, as I worked at the Battleground Branch for a number of years. There I've got some, some business contacts and business community knowledge. I love to volunteer. I think it's important that people give back and serve their community. I'm excited when people do and they get involved because it takes all of us to make a difference.
Absolutely.
And I really enjoy my work on the board, and I hope to continue.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to some specific policy issues now. The legislature last week finally passed a state budget, including funding for McCleary. What do you foresee, how will that change, the funding in Evergreen? And do you think, does it appear to be enough to meet the McCleary mandate? What will it mean for schools? We'll start with Julie.
Well, I hope it's enough. It appears that it will be. I think that it was positive for teachers, students. Things in it are positive. I like the fact that they've taken the funding and put it at the state level. We've been asking for it for years. It's been an ongoing issue since I started on the school board. 2012 is when McCleary really started to begin. So it's exciting for me to finally see something happening. Things will definitely be different. I'm not exactly sure how it's going to look when it's all penciled out. I haven't seen our numbers because obviously we were waiting, like everybody else, to put our budget together, which I have all the faith and confidence in our, Mike Murley and his team, that they'll be able to do that. But I haven't seen preliminary numbers of how it's going to look. I imagine the first year or two will be the same, and we'll probably be coming up pretty good. After that, when our levy decreases, it may change the way, and it may change the way that we have to bargain our contracts after a couple of years. So I'm kind of anticipating those changes and how those will affect us. But I am excited that we are going to get more state funding and that we can use levy dollars for the way that they were intended, and that's for enrichment activities and remedial education to support our students.
Megan?
Yeah, and to kind of piggyback off that, I think there's also a lot of uncertainty about how those funds are, are going to be used. So kind of like what Julie said, there's going to have to be a lot of bargaining that takes place to make sure that those funds get into, back into educating our students.
An individual question. So Megan, you're a teacher.
Yes.
And I'm assuming the, most people would say that the, the business of the school board member, schools director, is to try to balance the public and the money that has been raised from public taxes with the idea that we have to add a fund and nourish these kids.
Right.
And there's this balancing act, particularly as we go through negotiations.
Right.
So you're a teacher.
Mm-hmm.
That feels like you're going to be weighted toward the teacher side of this issue. How do you, I'm assuming you get that question. How do you convince people that you're not just all in, all in with the teachers?
Right. I mean, and, and what's interesting about being a teacher too is you have that perspective of being in the classroom. You have that knowledge about what the kids need and where those funds should be going. I, I don't see it as a, as a us and them. I see us working together to make sure that we're hearing from all sides so that those dollars are being best spent and going to what our kids need the most as far as their learning is concerned.
I mean, I tell you, look other teachers in the eye. If you're playing a hardball, if you're playing a hardball with what they want and what you don't think that the public can afford.
Right.
How do you do that?
And it's, and, and that's where educating your public comes into play.
What about educating the teachers?
And, and, well, that's part of our, yeah, that's part of our public too. But yeah, educating our teachers, educating our public, absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Did I, I want to make sure that I read the information correctly. I mean, obviously, we're in the business of education.
Sure.
And is your highest degree an associate degree?
That's correct.
Have you heard anything, has anybody ever said you're in the business of education, but you don't have a four-year degree? Is there some dynamic there?
No, nobody's actually ever brought that up. I got my degree after I started in the workforce. So I guess I would be an example of one of those students that doesn't really have a pathway, career, or college, but has determination and goals and wants to do what's, you know, best for myself. Started out of high school and kind, actually, I wanted to be a teacher. That's what my main vision was going to be. But, and I started going to Clark College, and my family didn't have the means to send me away to a university. So started going to Clark College. Life starts to happen. Was married young. I started my family young. Got my job at Columbia Credit Union when I was young. And worked really hard. And I feel like I've built a really good life for myself by working hard and going back to school and earning my associates and earning my management certificate from Clark College and helping me further my career at Columbia Credit Union. And I feel like I've kind of learned as I've gone, and...
If you were counseling a student today, would you counsel them to go ahead and get a four-year degree or otherwise?
Well, my, my son, I, as a parent, you always want what you didn't have, right?
Yeah.
So I told my son, I said, hey, we got to get you to a four-year university, and you got to go to school because I want you to have every opportunity that I didn't have. And he's actually studying to be a teacher. And yeah, extremely proud of him because I feel like he's, and he's passionate about it, and it's exciting to watch him do what maybe I couldn't. But I still could if I ever wanted to, but I have a fantastic job, and I've got a company that supports me in, in what I do. And I feel like my job today, I get to do a lot of the things that I always wanted to do. I problem solve, I teach, I coach, so I get to do a lot of those things. But I think it depends. I think, I think they need to follow their passion. But I guess my advice, because I've always wanted that experience for myself, would be to, you know, try college if it doesn't work out, but find a career that you can work yourself up in and, you know, and don't stop. Because we're lifelong learners, so that's the message that we give to every graduating class, is you're a lifelong learner, and it doesn't stop when we hand, you know, we shake your hand and hand you that diploma. You keep going out into the community, and you've got to learn. Every single day you learn something.
Absolutely.
Want to follow up one more personal question? Megan, you teach in Hawkinson. Obviously, you live in the Evergreen District.
Yes, yes.
Do you have any other ties to the Evergreen District other than just residence? Have you been involved with the schools in that district?
Yeah, well, I've gone in and volunteered in some of the, you know, nearby schools and off time. And I have friends that live in the Evergreen District, so they're teachers, so go help them and, in their classrooms, and yeah.
The, the Evergreen is going to go through a transition with the new superintendent this year. What, for the coming year? What do you see as the school board's role in that? How is this going to be good or a setback for the district? Julie?
Well, I'm really excited about it. Obviously, I was part of the process. John Dieter's been a fantastic superintendent. I've enjoyed working with him. I think that the role of the school board is to develop a really strong relationship with the superintendent and the other members of the school board, so you can work together to build a vision that works best for the students and the community. Dr. Steich, I think, is going to do a fantastic job. He's already been with us for the last three years in that deputy superintendent role. He's the one that's really been the force behind our personalized learning initiative. And this year, we're actually rolling it out. I'm really excited because the one devices are coming out. But I think that the role of the school board is really to build a good working relationship with him, be able to question things when they come up. I, you know, being someone who lives in the community, works in the community, and had, you know, my son went through Evergreen Schools, I have had the opportunity to listen to lots of other parents, and I'm in the schools all the time. I go to events after school. I get to hear a lot of feedback. And plus, I'm in the opportunity where I work with the public, so I hear people. And I think it's, when you hear things, it's okay to raise those up to the superintendent and let their team work with it and know what's going on from the community. That, I think, is one of the most important roles of the school board member. One of the things that we're working on right now is a governance model. We're kind of, kind of changing the way that we do things in our policies, becoming, and so we felt like it was a really good time to do that when John Steich was new, and kind of start that work now, what we've been working on this summer.
Megan, what do you see as the relationship between the board and the transition to a new superintendent?
Yeah, I think it's exciting. I think it's always neat to work with somebody that kind of has a fresh perspective. And he's, what I've come to understand is he's in the classrooms quite a bit, visiting with teachers and seeing what's going on. And I'm really excited about somebody that's involved in the schools, to be working alongside and, and helping with that.
Megan, your hope obviously is to unseat Julie. That's the business of the race.
This is politics.
Give me some specifics as to why. I mean, you know, I don't expect you, nor do I want you to get nasty. But I mean, there must be something that you're saying you could do better than Julie. You're running against her. There's something maybe that you don't think she's doing as well as could be, that you could do better. What, what's going on?
I think Julie's fantastic. I think she's fantastic.
Over Julie?
I do, I do think that there needs to be more voices from education going into these positions. I think especially now, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people in policymaking, in the policymaking business that don't have that perspective from the classroom. And I, I happen to be in Position One, that happened to be running against Julie. I, I really feel that it's important to have a wide variety of perspectives sitting on the board.
Including this important one of sitting in the classroom?
Absolutely. In the business of educating students, actually being in the schools and seeing what those kids' needs are, when you're sitting and making a decision about putting money into your schools, there needs to be that perspective.
How do you respond?
Well, I think that the teacher's perspective is a, is a great perspective to have, but I think that I have that, I have a great relationship with numerous teachers in our district. I ask them questions all the time. They feel comfortable coming to me if they have something that they want to bring up. Anybody who wants to reach out to me, I'm willing to talk to. And I've had several teachers meet with me one-on-one, you know, and I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to raise those, those questions and concerns up. I think that a school board director has to have a global view of the entire district. You have to keep the student at the center of the circle all the time. That has to be your focus. But you have to take care of all your employees. And we're a large district. We've got 3,000 employees, and teachers make up about 1,800 of that 3,000, which is a very important group. And I have the utmost respect for teachers. I mentioned, I wanted to be a teacher. I love the profession. My son is going to school to be a teacher. But there has to be a balance where you take care of all of your employees, you have transportation to worry about, and you have to be fiscally responsible and answer to the taxpayers because that's really the people who are the ones that are, you know, footing the bill for the, the cost of education. And we got to do right by everyone.
Do you think a worthy teacher would have that balance that you're talking about?
I think that a teacher could. I've seen other teachers do that, but I, I guess my worry would be that there'd be some conflicts of interest with the, the association and the leadership, you know, trying to work that angle. And I think it would be difficult to bargain and negotiate contracts.
The last contract was pretty contentious, right?
Yeah, it was.
Maybe you can both give us your perspective on how that went and who you thought might have not been playing fair.
Do you want me to start on that one? Well, I went through it. As, as a board director, in fact, I was board president at the time. I think that the climate of the state played a big part in that. You know, without McCleary being decided, I think teachers felt a lot of pressure in their leadership groups to, you know, make sure that their interests were protected. And I don't blame that one bit. I, I support unions. I, you know, I understand the need for a union in protecting employees' rights. During that time, I felt like our board has always wanted to take care of teachers, and our teachers are like the highest paid in the entire region. I don't think it was ever a question of not taking care of our teachers. But I think that during that time, there might have been some misconceptions, and, you know, not all of the information from both sides was getting out to the public because we agreed to negotiate in good faith and, you know, do it kind of, you know, in a private setting. And then some things started going out through the media, social media, and, you know, as you all know probably in the newspaper business, that can take off. So I guess to look at it again in kind of a more global view, I guess I would probably want more transparency from both sides and make sure that each person's story is getting out. Because I think when it was all over with, the community really didn't know what was happening, and there was even teachers in the association who weren't even sure what the final details were. And I read every single post throughout social media and through Colombian newspaper. I read every single post because I, that's important to me to know how our community feels. So I...
Did you think the teachers were playing fair in the union?
The leadership, I think that they, they probably could have played a little nicer. Yeah, I think that they probably could have come, you know, to an agreement sooner. But I also don't think it was just necessarily them. I think it was a greater, you know, I think WEA, we saw strikes in Kelso right before. We saw strikes in other districts. I think we were targeted as a district for WEA to kind of stronghold and show that, you know, there was some power over.
Okay. What can you go on there?
Yeah, well, and, and it's funny you brought that up because that's kind of one of the reasons and passions what inspired me to, to run as well. I just, I felt it was very adversarial, and I really believe in working together for the greater good of our schools.
Did one side or the other make it more adversarial?
That, I, like Julie said, I really, I think that it would have been nice for both to be more transparent and, and play nice. You know, of course, she's hearing it more from one side, I'm hearing it more from the other, and so we're kind of coming at it from two different angles. But like I said, you know, I, I believe in, in working together. And, you know, when we're fighting against each other, that doesn't do anything for our schools.
Megan, if you were elected, what, what would be your top goals for the next few years?
I, I really think it's important that we're making sure that we have current and relevant curriculum in our schools, to make sure that we're meeting students' needs. I mean, we have a very diverse population in, in our Evergreen Schools, and we need to make sure that we're providing cultural competence training. We need to make sure that we have curriculum that supports what our kids need, to make sure that we're growing a solid and good community.
And you're not seeing that now?
Right now, our teachers don't have a solid curriculum. They're creating it themselves. So what we're seeing is a lot of teacher burnout, especially our younger teachers. As they come in, they have a lot of passion, and yeah, we want those, we want those teachers to come in with passion and with ideas. But they're working a lot to make sure that all of those needs are met within the schools and making sure that we're meeting state standards and making sure that, you know, but they have to create all that themselves. So to make sure that there's at least a base for, for our students so that teachers can supplement if they need to and meet and diver, you know, diversify their teaching, if they need to, but at least they have that.
So who would be at fault for that not happening now?
Well, I, I, I think that there's a lot of communication that needs to take place within the schools to the superintendent, to the school board, you know? And somewhere that fell short. So I'm hoping that we can start filling in those gaps.
Julie, what would your goals be?
Well, if I can kind of answer the curriculum, we do have a curriculum department. We have curriculum for our grade levels. In fact, we're just moving to digital content. And we just approved at our last couple of board meetings, a whole array of digital content that are going to be used. I actually personally looked through it, and, and I was, one of my main concerns is I want to make sure then digital content, that there's enough, and there's many, many layers there. There's lots of things for the teacher to choose from. So that, to me, was exciting. We haven't bought a whole lot of textbooks in the last five years because of the recession, for one. And then when we came out of the recession, we knew we were going to a digital, and so we did get digital content, and that's all being used now, and it will be as we go with our personalized learning initiative. So seeing our personalized learning initiative, for me, I think our, my main goals all kind of go together. We've been working on equity and access for every student for several years now. I'm really proud of the work that we have in this area. Some of the things that we've done are, you know, reducing participation fees, supplying the school supplies for elementary-age students. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done, more things that we can do. We have to be creative and diligent about it and keep working at it. I've always been one to believe that if a student can get involved in an activity, they're more likely to stay engaged in school. So I've always been a proponent of, hey, let's get activities for kids, whether it's elementary after-school activities or high school sports, drama, whatever it is, chess club, just something that they have something to hold on to. So that's something that I've always been working on, but that's part of our equity initiative that we've been working on, our personalized learning. And I think that goes with our equity initiative because we want to make sure that every student's needs are met, and if they have a personalized learning plan, they can get there. So that's something that's very important to me that we're working on.
Two issues common in public schools nowadays are school vouchers and charter schools. What are your thoughts on, on those? Would either of those be beneficial to the Evergreen District? Julie?
I, I haven't been a fan of charter schools or school vouchers. I am a public school advocate. I always have been. I'm a product of public schools. I, I believe in them, and I think that charter schools are sometimes a, an area of choice. And I believe that a strong school district, and a school district our size can build choices within our own school system. So students have options. And if it's career and technology courses, or if it's, you know, music, band, arts, whatever it is, we have choice. We've got Hila High, which has some choice, and some might say that that might be similar to what would be a prototypical charter school because it's a magnet school or, you know, specific area of study. But I would like to see more of that throughout all of our schools. And that's what probably my goal would be, is just to offer choice within our district.
Megan?
I'm a total advocate for public schools. I believe in holding our students to adequate, high standards and making sure that it's equitable. And I, I too am afraid that if we go to charter schools, vouchers, we're going to start seeing this in our...
But doesn't that give parents more choice and create competition within the district and therefore make schools better?
No. No.
You're not buying that one?
Not going to buy that. Not at all.
So I just curious, maybe, if you want to answer this, are there any teachers now on the school board?
We do not have a teacher on our school board. There is a teacher that teaches in our district that's on the Canvas School Board.
And in Hawkinson, we have a retired teacher on our school board.
I guess it's true Battleground too, they have Mavis, who's a retired school teacher.
Yeah.
Well, how do you come down on the gender issues that are kind of for a certain time being in the school system?
You know, that's, that's a tough question because it's usually one that's really controversial in the community. But I believe that every student has the right to a free, appropriate education, and that includes making accommodations to people in gender identity. And so we have to do, we have to accommodate to them, make them feel safe and wanted and welcome in our schools.
So, so do you support the state law position at this point?
Yes.
So, and that would be that gender students can use the bathroom they identify with? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, and, exactly. I mean, I, ours, we need to make sure that we're creating safe environments for our students. I mean, I, ours, we need to make sure that we're creating safe environments for our students and we need to make sure that our students are, feel safe in our schools. And I'm talking at all students, so.
Just to clarify, Megan, you're, what, are you an elementary school or an elementary...
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Because I'm wondering what, so it seems like ever since No Child Left Behind, it's been, which had, in my opinion, a very noble goal. So, but since then, it seems like it's been an alphabet super bureaucracy testing. It confuses me as cadence editors to exactly what all these different things are. What's the future that, what can local school boards do to try to give more clarity to parents and community members about what exactly the standards are and how we measure those?
Right. I, I'm not a fan of just using high-stakes testing. I, I think that there needs to be a variety of assessments used and...
But doesn't that make it more confusing?
To, to, if somebody wants it black and white, sure. But a school is not black and white and students are not black and white. And we need to make sure that we are supporting our kids and collecting data on a wide variety of, of levels. I mean, so that we can meet their needs accordingly. Teachers create lessons based on how their students do in the classroom, on tests, on assessments. And they create their lessons from those assessments. And so, it needs to be more, it needs to be more classroom-based. High-stakes testing is coming down and then teachers sometimes don't even see the results of how their kids did. How can we bring that back into our classrooms and educate our students from that?
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
I definitely agree with Megan. I don't think the results of the state testing has ever been timely. And I think by the time we get them, it's, we're already into the next school year. And then I think we're, you know, trying to race to figure out how to help a kid that maybe didn't test as well. I think that kids, sometimes they're not great test takers. Sometimes they learn by doing hands-on or, you know, maybe verbally, and they're not a great test taker. So, I think to, you know, pigeonhole a student based on how well they took a test maybe is unfair. I also think that because of, and I also agree with the concept of, you know, No Child Left Behind because isn't that what it's really about? You know, we want every child to succeed and so that's not letting anybody left behind. But I think that because of it, I think that everything has been kind of a rush to, this isn't working, let's try this, let's try it. And so, sometimes you kind of have to let things kind of take its place and hold on for a little bit before you change it and kind of get results over years. Because if they just changed the testing like they did recently, we're not getting those results. And then it was like, well, it's not mandatory to take it. Well, then, so 50% of your kids take it and then it's, how is that accountability for a school district too? So, I think we have to figure out some ways to test kids that have accountability to the state because I think we have to be held accountable. But I also think that individual student assessments are a more effective way to make sure that students are progressing in their grade level.
Yes.
We've all heard stories of kids who are passed through the system with passing grades and they end up at some university or another, I would assume, and they're illiterate. And, you know, college professors, you know, shake their head although they know what's going on. You know, and how does this kid end up in college and this kid can't even read?
Scary.
Does, does that happen? Does that ever happen in the Evergreen School District? And if so, how do you, how do you put the kibosh on that? First of all, does it happen? Are you buying in or are you saying this never happens?
I, I want to say that, I mean, everybody has a different degree of knowledge when they, you know, walk out the door and they've all, they've all completed the standards that it takes to graduate. Do some, are some more high-achieving than others? Absolutely. But I think that when they graduate, they have the baseline and they can get, and as long as they're committed to lifelong learning, I don't think they're illiterate and I don't think that anybody's that...
So, that wouldn't happen?
No, yeah.
Have you ever seen this happen? You're a teacher.
I know, right? I haven't personally seen it happen. I do, I do know that we need to start closing that achievement gap and, and there have been kids that slipped through the cracks. I don't know if they're completely illiterate, but we do need to start closing that gap. And it comes with research, it comes with funding our schools. And that's why, you know, getting closer to that clear decision is better.
So, as a teacher, you've never said, hey, this kid, I really should give this kid an F. But you know what? I give this kid an F, you know, he's pushed back in this same grade another year. You know what? I'm gonna give him the D and move him along. You don't, you, you never even thought that?
I, I personally have not thought that. I know that we've kept kids back because they weren't ready to move on. Absolutely. They needed to mature a little bit more.
I've seen parents that have been frustrated with their students and maybe at the level that they're at, that have felt like maybe they've just passed students through. But I, that those kids are capable, they're capable of, you know, reading, writing, getting a job and being successful. So, maybe they're not, you know, gonna be a chemist, but they're, they're gonna be able to be okay when they leave.
And I think too, I mean, yeah, when you were talking about, you know, the associates and making sure that there's more... I think kids need to make, I think we need to make sure that kids know all of their options and we need to educate them on opportunities that are out there. Maybe their families can't afford them to, afford to send them to a four-year school. It's expensive and they don't want to take the loans out and they can't, you know, apply for a grant or whatever. But we need to make sure that we're providing that in our schools, educating kids.
Just to clarify, I think somebody asked earlier, but you teach elementary?
Yes, yes.
Well, go ahead and move on then to the final step. Give us your final pitch why voters should support you. And please mention any notable endorsements you care to share. Start with Megan.
Okay. Well, I, I know kids, I know schools. I'd love to be a voice and an advocate for our students and our Evergreen Schools. I believe that growing strong schools grow great communities. And I've been endorsed by the Southwest Labor Council, WEA, and the Young Democrats of Clark County.
Thank you.
I feel like voters should vote for me and keep me in this position because I know this community. I work hard at it every day to make our schools better. I'm committed, dedicated, and I really am passionate about the work that I do to help kids. I feel like, as someone who knows the community, I feel like I have a global approach and kind of can look at everything and understand the needs of the entire community. Some endorsements that I've received, I received the Student Focused Caucus Group. I'm waiting on a couple of other groups to announce. It's still pretty early, that's one of the things about running a primary. I've got some notable endorsements from David Nierenberg, Rona Sanhaas, the, Victoria Bradford, Todd Uzaria, Michael Parsons, Rob Perkins. My fellow school board members all are supporting me and endorsing me. John Dieter, Joan Skelton, former school board member. Several teachers, family, family members, community, students, so.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.